I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Education for the school district of Bearaboo to order for Monday, October 22nd, 2012 with roll call. Mr. Cummings?
Here.
Mr. McNeven?
Here.
Mr. Mearing?
Here.
Mr. Mortimer?
Here.
And Riley?
Mr. Pedro?
Here.
And Odek here. Continue with the pledge, flag behind the screen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all things. I would entertain a motion that have be resolved. The Board of Education approve the minutes of the October 8th, 2012 meeting as printed.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Pedro, second by Mearing. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Before we get to correspondence, I want everybody to look down to new business, which is item number nine. And I entertain a motion to move F to the top and have everything else slide down so that we can have the discussion in regards to the Dean health insurance renewal prior to the rest of the discussion. So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Brings us to correspondence, of which I have none. Any other board members with correspondence?
I have received a letter from Cladella Miller expressing her concern that some of our students may not be able to pay for ACT and other evaluation tools and encouraging the district to follow suit with the state's proposal to support that.
Any other board members with correspondence? Administrative correspondence?
I have a communication from Chris Labitz, high school math teacher, and he's advising us that the high school math team recently took a qualifying test for a national math contest. The contest finds the top 10 students in the nation to compete against each other at the National Mathematics Conference. And we are proud to announce that one of our high school students, Caitlin Randall, has been selected to be a contestant for the 2013 Who Wants to be a Mathematician Contest. It'll be held in San Diego on Thursday, January 10th. And questions will be selected from pre-calculus, algebra, trigonometry, geometry, history of math, and a few other words I can't pronounce. The top prize is 5,000 for the contestant and 5,000 for the math department. So congratulations to Caitlin and we look forward to it.
Any other administrative correspondence? Hearing none, I'd like to move on to public viewpoints. Do we have anybody here for public viewpoints tonight? Any public viewpoints? Any public viewpoints? Hearing none, brings us to staff and student recognition, which is always a highlight of our agendas and in particular, a highlight tonight. And I see that Abe is well represented here tonight. And I'd like to turn it over to Crystal, staff, John, principal, and the building rep, Maureen, who went to Madison representing the school.
I think maybe we'll start with John and Maureen if you'd like to maybe just highlight more participation in the recognition ceremony and talk about the awards that were presented.
I'm gonna pass this around. This is the plaque that we got on October 2nd, 2012. Al Bearman Elementary Schools recognized as a school of recognition. And we got to go down to Madison and have an amazing, an amazing day down in which Maureen's gonna kind of sum up for us right here. But it was, it was something very special for us and everybody. And I'm gonna pass it around. Also Fred Carr, our representative, also gave us a plaque that talks about our school and what we've done. So I'll also pass that around. And I'm gonna turn the floor over to Maureen.
I recently had the honor to accompany Dr. Ritson Fowler and John Blazinski to the state capitol to receive the Wisconsin School of Recognition Award. I was humbled to be the one allowed to make this trip. Could've been any one of the tremendous staff at Al Bearman Elementary. We enjoyed time at the concourse hotel, learning about spotlight schools. This is a new aspiration. A spotlight school is something that you can achieve by being a Wisconsin School of Recognition school for three consecutive years. You then apply to become a spotlight school. And when you do this, you then host other schools interested in what you are doing right. I heard that this, one of the districts that we were able to hear, they're using collaboration, curriculum and assessment, as well as current technologies. And it allowed me to see that we are well on our way to becoming a spotlight school. We heard the author, Michael Perry, speak, and I now have several of his books. It was a perfect fall day and the state capitol and the grounds were just spectacular. The feeling as we walked from our lunch over to the capitol was surreal and only became more so. This honor is something that one dreams of in a career. This was a day that belonged to the entire school, an honor that truly belongs to the school. I feel more than grateful to have been selected to be there. This is a day that we went toward through great dedication and hard work. I went to school before leaving that day, just to make sure that everything was ready for the sun. I thought of Al Bearman and the education that we strive to give those children is just what he wanted. As I began to make my way out of the building, I thought of each teacher and support staff that works in that building and the impact that together we're able to make in the lives of children. Professional development, time to collaborate provided by the district along with rigorous expectations have gone far. But the staff at Al Bearman brings more than that to the table. There is dedication to the students that is phenomenal. There are cars in the parking lot by 6:00 a.m. most every day. Teachers are there at 5:00 o'clock and well beyond. This doesn't even speak to the loads that are carried home to be worked on throughout the evening. There is not a weekend that goes by that the parking lot is empty. There is one or a group of us there to work to better meet the needs of the children. The staff strives to help each child feel that school is a safe place where wonderful things can happen. We work to open doors for all students. We set expectations high and we know great joy when they reach them. We're determined to continue knowing this joy. It's what we do. And I am so proud of us. For the co-primes.
The fact that we have so many staff here tonight from Abe really, is really representative of the way that they work together as a team. And I had a teacher say to me recently, and actually it wasn't a teacher from your school, but it really exemplifies your work together. And she made the statement, you know, "We've been dealing with some challenging student behaviors lately and I really understand what it means that, that saying that it takes a village to raise a child. We are all working together as a team to support our students." And I, I see that with the staff and part of the success of the school and your students can be really attributed to your dispositions and your work ethic and the way you work together as a team. And, you know, Maureen is always one step ahead of me, darn it! And I said to her, we were listening to a motivational speaker and it was the first alumni presented who had gone through a high poverty school. And he's a successful writer and a very humble person and he was great to listen to. And he kind of had a connection with Maureen's personal life on the farm. So I thought, you know, we didn't have time to, to look at his books that he had there. So I went out and got you one and darted, if it's one you have, I'll make sure you can take it back and get another one. It's so, it's so appropriate. Cool, a family, a farm, and the pursuit of one good egg. Thank you all for coming tonight and we look forward to Abe being a spotlight school. And I'll tell you, I was sitting with Maureen when we were listening to the other schools present and she said, "That's gonna be us." And I know when you guys put your mind to something, you're gonna do it. So we do look forward to that. Thanks for coming tonight.
Does the board have any, any questions or comments it'd like to?
I'd just like to take a moment and congratulate all of you for your accomplishments, the hard work on a daily basis that you do. I just scribbled a note. I received my masters in teaching 40 years ago and taught for 18 years. But I have never felt that the requirements of what are placed before you to support our children have ever been as great as they are. And if there are any heroes in this district, it is all of our teachers and you especially. And thank you for bringing this home to the awareness of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments?
I'd like to compliment John and his decent haircut. More like you.
Thank you. Brings us to the portion of the agenda entitled Continuous School Improvement. And letter A is school report cards and NAEP cut scores. There was some information provided in front of the board, so if you want to pull that pack of colored papers out, you can follow along at some point.
And a PowerPoint.
And a PowerPoint for Sean.
Yeah, I know. I don't know if you want that in public record or not. We're gonna talk tonight about, I think, a very monumental day in Wisconsin educational history. Our first Wisconsin school report cards were issued and publicly released today. So I'm gonna walk you through that. The outline for tonight's discussion is why do we have these school report cards? Explain the main components of those cards to you and answer your questions regarding that. Part of our report cards is the fact that we are using the NAEP cut scores. I'll explain that more and so you'll understand that and how that impacts proficiency indicators for our students. I'll also share with you a state distribution of the overall accountability scores so you get a sense, because I know we like to compare ourselves to others, where do we fall? And I'll provide a look at each of our Bearaboo Schools' report cards. You have them on your tables. We'll highlight the strengths and areas for growth for each building and lastly address any of your questions. So quickly, why do we have these school report cards? It's part of the state's waiver from the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, otherwise known as No Child Left Behind. The state put through a waiver last school year and part of the waiver was that we would need to change our accountability. And the intent of the accountability measure that we have now versus what we had from just looking at attainment on the WKC is it's intended to be more fair, raise expectations, and provide meaningful measures to inform continuous school improvement. The waiver requirements are applicable to last school year. So the report cards that you have in front of you are from the 1112 school year. And part of the waiver requirements was 25% of the school card, school report card would still have to be based on the achievement score, honor, WKC. And just to be clear, that's the only assessment that is measured in these school report cards when we talk about assessment, assessments that students would accomplish or, or take. I said, except for the ACT. It's based on new NAEP cut points. The NAEP stands for National Assessment of Educational Progress. It's the national assessment that our federal government uses to measure the progress of students in the areas of reading and math compared to other countries across the world. We will note that with those new NAEP cut points that in order to be the new proficient, we're looking at students who are formerly scoring advanced. And so if John was scoring basic last year, he might be minimal with this new cut, well, cut score, that'd be so sad. But it doesn't mean that John has changed or John hasn't grown. It just means that the benchmark has changed, okay? We also have reported historically data for students if there was a cell size of 40 or more. That cell size has now been dropped to 20. So it does make our achievement more transparent for our subgroups, like students with disabilities, English language learners, low-income students. Each school receives a report card, except for our West Elementary School does not, because there isn't a report card for a kindergarten center. So you, that's why you'll note there isn't one there for West Elementary.
Laurie, okay, so, so I understand that it, it sounds to me like state of Wisconsin standards lagged behind the national standards.
There's been, there's been criticism with the implementation of the No Child Left Behind the Act, that the state, our state, Wisconsin, set low benchmarks at that time. And so when we've been reporting for the past, how many years, that our students are scoring proficient or advanced, if we were to compare those same students up against national students, we would see that they were really at a low percentile in comparison. So, yes.
Well, Wisconsin backloaded their growth.
You got it.
We got to set our own path as to how we got there. The federal government set the bar here and let the states decide how they got there.
Correct.
And Wisconsin chose a longer progression with a higher gain in the latest years.
In the end, correct.
And that's why, at the end, everybody was gonna start missing the proficiency.
The AYP benchmarks, yep.
But even with the new NAEP cut points, those are higher standards than what Wisconsin had set.
Absolutely, correct.
And so when DPI's been coming out over the last six months, they've been saying, "Expect scores to go down because we've set a higher level."
Higher level, higher benchmark, correct.
And that's always a good thing.
It's always a good thing. And what we've done as a district to respond to that is set our own district benchmarks at that same level.
We aligned our standards with the national standards before Wisconsin came along with their increased levels.
Yes, you got it. Okay. All right, any other questions?
I'm just trying to wrap my mind.
You're good, because you articulate in a different way than I do, so I appreciate that.
I'm sure we'll always be on different pages.
So, and maybe just to continue to answer your question, those new cut scores were released in the summer of this last, you know, last summer. And the school level data is now being released in the fall. When our students receive reports back and families receive reports back from DPI and how their students scored on the WKC, they get an individual student profile report. Those reports will not be retroactively changed for last year for families, but moving forward with this winter, you know, because our students are, are taking the WKC today and district will get those results in the winter and those will have the new NAEP cut points with the new proficiency indicators. And so in your packet that you received earlier today, the PowerPoint, you'll see here that they changed the definitions of those proficiency indicators. So advanced is a different advanced moving forward, proficient is different, okay? So what this means is no longer will the district receive an AYP report, Adequate Yearly Progress Report. That has gone, gone by the wayside and what's being replaced is now with the school report cards. The school report cards are based on four priority areas. Student achievement, student growth, closing the gaps, and on-track and post-secondary readiness, and I'll talk about each of those briefly. All four of those areas are added together to give us an index score between 0 and 100. So when you look at those school report cards, you'll see that number, 0 to 100, in the little cute state icon on the top of the report card. And then also districts or schools can lose points, have a point deduction, five points each, if they don't have good test participation rate on the WKC, or if their absenteeism rate is too high, or if their dropout rate is too high. And we'll talk about those thresholds shortly. Once each building has their final score then, they are placed on a continuum of five rating levels. So you can see the highest level a school can achieve is significantly exceeds expectations or the lowest ranking there is fails to meet expectations. So, just real quickly about each of those four areas. Student attainment is looking at our WKC data the same way we've looked at in the past. We're looking at the percent of students who are scoring proficient or advanced, but they combine the score into one score on the report card. So they're taking reading and math, they're combining it, and they're looking at the past three years. Okay, so it's not just the 1112. It includes 9, 10, 10, 11, 11, 12 altogether in one score, reading and math combined. The last school year, the 1112 school year weighs the most. And we earn points by the proficiency indicator that students score. So if Molly scores an advanced, that gives us 1.5 points for a multiplier. If Jill scores proficient, we get one point. John, who's basic, gives us a point five. And poor John here gives us zero, because he's minimal. And so all those get added together and again, more weight is given to the most recent years' data. So that gives you that first score when you look at those report cards. Another portion, or one-fourth, of the school report card is based on student growth. And the purpose of this area is to really look at how quickly we can move our students in gaining the knowledge and skills that are part of the common core. What they do is they look at student growth percentiles that is part of the state longitudinal data warehouse system. So I'm gonna keep picking on John, he's right here. If John was a third grader last school year and he took the WKC, we look at his reading attainment and they put him in a cohort with other third graders in the entire state of Wisconsin that scored at the same level as he did. Then as they take the WKC in fourth grade, they look and see how much growth he made in comparison to the other students in his cohort. And then they give us a score. So every single student gets a score based on how much growth they made in comparison to their peers across the state.
It's not against the standard, it's against other students.
You got it.
So we're competing against other students, not achievement of the standard.
In this particular priority area?
In the growth area.
Yep, it's a growth area, yep.
But what if we're, what if the state's doing fantastic and, oh, all of a sudden the student growth isn't as good here, even though maybe the whole state is doing well?
Yep, and that's the criticism of like value-added data, which is similar to this, that in order for students to look better than other students, other students have to look worse, right? Yep, because they're being compared to each other.
There is no ceiling. Let's say John went to a 12th grade level, would he get credit for growing nine grades?
Well, actually, they give us points based on moving students from minimal to basic, basic to proficient, or proficient to advanced. So the more we grow him, the more points we get.
But then there still is a ceiling.
Yes, there is a ceiling with this assessment.
So even though the person might break through the ceiling, we won't?
It doesn't necessarily give us more points, correct.
Okay.
Yep. You got it. Okay? Then closing achievement gap, this looks at how well we're doing in closing the gap for our subgroups, our students with disabilities, our low-income students, our English language learners. And if we don't have a cell size of 20 students in any of those areas, they combine those groups together to create a supergroup. So sometimes that's a disadvantage when we're looking at our data, because if we see we have great progress with a supergroup, which may be students with disabilities and English language learners, we're not really sure if we're doing a great job with both or one or the other. Does that make sense? Okay? So that's the other way that they're looking at this. And again, what they're doing is they're looking at how much growth each student is making in those subgroups. And we can also lose points in this particular priority area if there's a decline in their performance.
Laurie, would you say that the purpose of, the larger purpose of looking at students within a cohort across the state is really to help identify best practices? Who is growing faster and?
From the same starting point.
From the same cohort, so that we can look at, well, what are, what's the curricula? What, what are the strategies that are being used so that we can all learn from each other? It's not really a grading as much as an attempt to identify where, for lack of a better term, sweet spots might be that we want to focus on, because they're working well.
Correct. And, you know, Tony Evers' press release for the State Journal today indicates that what's coming is we'll be able to share which schools are moving their kids the most and that can be part of our, our data system through the state so that we can share what our best practice is being used, knowing that each district has their own context and their own challenges.
Now, when we're looking at achievement gaps and, and again, let's say a school were to have a high percentage of people at a low end economically, we're being, that school would be measured against the state average, correct? Not within its own school, of other students.
You got it, right.
Okay, so it'd be measured against the state, yeah.
And then the fourth component is on-track indicators. And I should back up, for the student growth, the high school does not have that component included in their, in their report card, because the ninth graders are not assessed on the WKC, so they can't measure growth year to year, because the last time they took the assessment was in eighth grade. Okay, so on-track indicators looks at a couple of components and these components are based on what the state has deemed our predictors for students to be on-track for college and career readiness, for post-secondary readiness. And so for our elementary schools, that's looking at their attendance rate and their third grade reading achievement, attainment data. For our middle school, it means looking at attendance rate and their eighth grade math achievement or attainment data. And for the high school, it's looking at graduation rate and it's also looking at their ACT participation and performance. Then those student engagement indicators where we can have four, sorry, five-point deductions, we can lose five points if we have less than 95% of our students taking the test. We can also lose five points if we have more than 13% of our students with a high absenteeism rate. And what they base that on is if you have a student who is only in school about 84% of the time. That seems to be the threshold as we were digging into the data. We don't have a lot of those students. And then the dropout rate, if it, if it exceeds over 6%, then there would be another five-point deduction. So for each of our buildings, none of our buildings experienced any deductions for these student engagement indicators. So once we have that final score, we're put in that rating and you'll note here significantly exceeds expectations, these two higher levels are reward schools. If we fall in the middle, where DPI said most of us would fall with meets expectations, we continue local improvement efforts, and then if we fall into, or fall into either of these categories, we would be concerned low performing. And for your knowledge, you have the report cards there. Each of our buildings fell into the exceeds expectations and meets expectations. So for state distribution of overall accountability scores, just like the state said, most of the schools fell in the meets expectations. So you can see a really definitive bell curve here with very thin ends on the sides of that bell curve. And, you know, our, I think our middle school and high school principals would like me to point out that even though they meet, meet expectations and that is great, they were so close to being in exceeds expectations by just a hair. So we really are happy about that. And each of our elementary schools fell into that exceeds expectations category. So I'm gonna talk real quick then about each of our report cards. And then we did this, starting with elementary first, so, and these are on your table for you. You can see Abe's report card is exceeding expectations with the overall score of 73.1. And went, just as a point of reference, as we move through these kind of quickly, each of them are designed to highlight those, the scores for each of the four priority areas here. If there were any deductions, you'd see that here with the red flag. And then you'll see the past five years of performance for that particular school on the WKC, but with the new NAEP cut points being used to determine the percent proficient or advanced. So they retroactively applied those new NAEP cut scores to the past five school years. And you'll see the ratings and you'll see some demographic information, which is helpful if you're starting to have questions about, well, how big is our percentage of students who are perhaps economically disadvantaged or students with disabilities? So last Friday, we had teams of teachers come together and dig into the 18-page technical report card for each of their buildings and determine where, where are we really doing well in each of our buildings and where are some areas to be concerned about for growth for this particular accountability measure. So I'm gonna share some of their findings with you tonight, because I'm sure you have some questions as you're looking at each building. And you'll note that there will be trends across district, but also each building has their own context and their own strengths and their own challenges. And that's why it's important to, to dig deeper. With Abe, we noticed that math attainment is increasing. We're moving a lot of students from that basic, basic to proficient indicator in reading. We noted that we're closing the gap in reading for students with disabilities and ELL students. And we're also closing the gap in math for our economically disadvantaged. The areas for growth are reading attainment. We need to move more students to advanced in reading and we need to close the gap in math for our students with disabilities and ELLs. And so you'll be able to think about as we move into the next report card and you'll see it's different for each building. Then we look at East. East has a 73 overall score and their rating is exceeds expectations as well. East has a 73 overall score and their rating is exceeds expectations as well. And if we look at what that team came up with for strengths, here's a trend we're starting to see, math attainment is increasing. We're seeing increasing performance with our students with disabilities over the last three years in reading. We're also seeing a decrease in minimal performance of our students in both reading and math. And we seem to be closing the gap for economically disadvantaged students with disabilities in math. What we're concerned about is we have some stagnant growth in terms of moving students to that advanced proficiency indicator. We're concerned about the attainment of our Native American students when we look at the subgroups. Reading attainment and growth for economically disadvantaged students seems to be stagnant as well. And we're concerned about the number of third grade students who come to us and take the WKC for the first time in third grade and the numbers of students are starting at the minimal or basic proficiency indicator.
Laurie.
Yep.
I know there's no silver bullet, but when you take a look at the concern of the number of third graders that's starting out at minimal or basic, is that a pacing issue? Is it a 4K through 2 curriculum issue?
Yeah, and I'm going to get to this, I was going to talk about this because you're going to see this as a trend with each of the elementary buildings. It came up from a couple of the teams that they're concerned about that number of third grade that's starting low in reading in particular. And to me, that's a big enough trend to indicate that we have some work to do with our curriculum 4K through second grade. Now, we've taken those steps but we need to see that work indeed attained by our students. So what we've done is we, you know, determined those essential learning targets which are at a higher level because they're aligned to the Common Core. And because they're aligned to the Common Core, we re-raised the benchmarks for kids. And you know, that didn't come without a lot of concern from our teachers because they thought those expectations were high. But now that's the target and we're working towards that target. So indeed, we have raised the expectations but now we need to make sure our students are attaining. And we've had a lot of support from the board with resources to do that work, you know, so they have new resources to do that.
I might point out that no 4K student has taken the WKC yet.
Right, or not yet, this year will be our.
First year, right?
When is the WTC again?
The window just opened today, today is day one and it closes November 28th. So we'll have students throughout the district taking it different ways.
At different times?
Okay.
Then do we start to differentiate that data with our 4K students that are, I don't want to call them homegrown, but they've had that opportunity.
Sure.
And you take a look and see, that's an important indicator, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Or it's something to look at.
Absolutely. It speaks to the importance of early intervention efforts though, regardless if we're talking about 4KK1, 2. Our earliest learners are so critical because if they fall behind in those early years, it's going to take us five to seven years to close that gap for them. We know that from research. So it's so critical that our foundation with 4KK, those are important years, very important years. Here's GLW's report card, their score overall is 77.9, exceeds expectations. That's good. It is something to be celebrating. And when we look at strengths, you know, this team, just so you know, there aren't less strengths than Molly's building. And this team was all about what do we do to keep raising that score. So they noted that attainment trend is improving over the past three years in both reading and math. We see student growth in each of those areas as well and we're closing the gap for students with disabilities. So areas for continued growth would be to need to reduce the number of students performing minimal in reading. We need to improve re-attainment of our subgroups. Close the gap for the English language learners and economically disadvantaged, specifically the economically disadvantaged. And you can see it came up again with this team, different group of teachers. They're concerned about the number of third graders performing basic and minimal in reading.
If you look at GLW though, the student growth really is the key to their total score. And if you remember, we had staff here from GLW presenting on their win time, their structured intervention time, where they use data to group kids and work specifically with those needs week to week. Since that time, we've had other elementary schools now develop schedules and structures that work within their school to again, make sure that they have that very purposeful time set aside each week to work with those students in tier two and tier three.
It speaks to the power of the RTI process.
I have one question. I attended a PLC last year and there was some concern last year with where the second graders were. And again, this was at midpoint but they felt like they had done some pretty incredible stuff up to that point. It won't indicate in this, in this report, but how did the third graders do on the math testing this year?
Well, we just finished collecting that math data, so that's something that needs to be compiled yet. So I'll be curious to see what that attainment looks like in comparison to their attainment on the WKC last year's third graders.
Sure.
Yeah, so we can definitely dig into and we will be. The other thing we want to share with you in an upcoming meeting is that summer slide piece. You know, did summer school have the impact we wanted to for those students as well?
Yeah, so I'd be interested to see where those were compared from last year to this year's.
Right.
Map and our WKC scoring and also the summer slide.
Right, right. Okay, and then we have North Freedom with their overall rating is 79.5, exceeds expectations.
Yay.
Okay. Thank you. And for their strengths, you know, here you see that trend again, math attainment is steadily increasing and we're realizing student growth for students moving from proficient to advanced. Areas for growth, concerned about too many students performing at basic and minimal in reading, need to increase third grade reading performance. So you know, as a director of instruction, looking at my, you know, through my lens at each of these buildings, you're starting to see the trends, aren't you? You're seeing that through my shoes? Okay, then we have Jack Young Middle School. Their overall score in ratings, 72.5, meets expectations. Again, I'm going to just highlight for John's benefit, .5 away from exceeding expectations. So that's a great posting as well. And for strengths, we noted increased trends in advanced performance for our students. We saw less students are scoring minimal in math, less students with disabilities scoring minimal. Many students were growing from that basic to proficient level and we're closing the gap for English language learners and students with disabilities. So for growth, we want to see the number of students performing minimal in reading to increase each year. We're also seeing a trend here with the attainment of Native Americans and economically disadvantaged students is trending towards basic and minimal. Gap is growing for our economically disadvantaged students, so that can be a concern across the district, that number keeps growing. And the amount of advanced math students has steadily decreased over the last three years. And that was an interesting finding by the team. Because what that means is, you know, the efforts we're working on to now challenge our gifted and talented is an example and one piece of this will help make sure that that decrease doesn't occur for those advanced students. It's a problem of being too focused on the test, right, Mr. Vajro? I can see you giving that look.
I have a couple of notes here, reminders.
Can you ask a question over here?
When you say the gap is growing for the economically disadvantaged students, you're saying that our scores for the general population is increasing faster than our scores for economically disadvantaged.
You got it, yeah, so it's creating a bigger gap. Then for our high school, the overall score and rating is a 71.4, again, meets expectations. We missed it by 1.6 if I'm doing my math correctly, right, Mr. Los? Or exceeds expectations, so again, that's a really high number in that category of meets expectations. And for the high school, whoops, I forgot to put my header in strengths and areas for growth. But the strengths are increasing reading and math attainment we're seeing for the 11, 12 school year. We're noting improved attainment for our economically disadvantaged students. So it speaks to what I said, each building has its different context. We're moving students with disability from minimal to basic in reading, closing the gap for English language learners and economically disadvantaged. And our dropout rate was low, 1.5%. The concerns were regarding the number of students with disabilities scoring minimal in math. The gap in our graduation rate is increasing for our students with disabilities in particular and also for our economically disadvantaged. So that's something the building really needs to pay attention to because that probably is the biggest area that had an impact on their overall rating. Also, we need to pay close attention to our test participation rate because our test participation rate was 95.2%. Had one more student not taken that test, they would have seen a five-point deduction. So we got to be really careful about that, we got to make sure all our 10th graders are assessed. Bill and I had a very brief conversation today about what's going on there and it's not that our students in-house aren't taking the tests. It's students that we might have alternatively placed or we might have repeating students as 10th graders that were struggling to get assessed. So that's something we need to work on and perhaps work on in making sure we don't have repeating 10th graders. So you know, you've asked some really good questions and I wanted to end by talking about those good district actions that are occurring and really I can't summarize on one slide all the great things that are occurring across the district that we were already doing prior to digging into these report cards on Friday. And when I asked those teams on Friday, what can we do to continue to improve in this particular accountability measure? In many cases, we felt we already know what we need to be doing and we're working on it. And so we're hoping that as each year, we continue to improve. But you know, we talked just briefly, the power of the response intervention as a school improvement process. I really truly believe in that, there's no way for our students to fall behind if we implement that framework well. We've put a lot of resources into strengthening our core instruction, we've identified it, it's time to implement it and make sure our students attain it. So we're working on those common assessments this year. As a board, you've been great and gracious in making sure we have our resources to deliver that curriculum. Our coaching, our instructional coaching efforts are going to guarantee that our teachers are the best prepared teachers to deliver the curriculum with best instructional practices. This year, we have a focus on instructional priorities across the district. There's four priorities we've identified that we want to work out with every teacher through our supervision and evaluation process to grow those instructional strategies in particular with each of our staff members. Crystal mentioned this when she was talking about GLW. There's so much power in looking at ongoing data of our students and making real-time adjustments in their instruction so that we're not waiting 10 weeks down the road to see what a school report card is going to say. We know where our students are and we're working to close that gap for them all the time. The professional development we do in this district and the focus on inclusive and culturally responsive practices is going to help us look at, you know, those subgroups like our Native Americans, our economically disadvantaged. We need to look at how our teaching is having an impact on the attainment of our students who are in need. We talked also already about early intervention and setting high benchmarks that are at the college and career readiness levels. That should raise expectations for all of our students. And also, I know we keep hitting this, but that PLC structure, that early release Wednesday, that release time gives us the time we need to do this work. And if we didn't have that, you heard how Abe teachers are working full-time as it is, I don't know where they'd find the time to do this work if we didn't give that time. So we're doing the right things. But you know, we've talked before that student achievement is an ongoing process and it's very complex, it's multi-layered, multifaceted. We got to keep our eye on our vision and keep working towards the vision and it takes everybody to help our kids get there.
All right, I guess when you look at, wait, leave the district actions up there. Because as I go back, I've only had a tenure of about four years, but I've watched this community. This community has invested in curriculum, this community has invested in professional development, they've invested in technology. They've invested in time, PLC time. Our teachers have spent an inordinate amount of time on the essential learning targets and aligning the Common Core standards. We have done all the legwork over the last four years and all those investments have been made. This really starts coming down to the use of the data, doesn't it?
Yeah, absolutely.
Everything, and I don't even want to leave out the PBIS efforts.
Right.
For all the behavior modification.
Kids have to be in classes to learn.
All of those efforts are just starting to pay dividends.
Right.
But from here on out, it is more about the data than anything else. Because our pieces are in place, now we have to really drill in on those individual learners in each category and what we can do to make it better.
Absolutely.
We're still working on in a lot of areas though, common assessments to make sure that those are aligned with the curriculum now too. So that will be ongoing this year as well.
But yes, I mean, we have the skill set and the resources to do the necessary work. We really don't have any excuses moving forward if our students aren't attaining where we want them to because we have the knowledge and the skills and the resources to do that work. That's a courageous conversation we have with each other every day here.
I think we're sitting very nice.
I think so too. I want you to walk away, I think you have a lot to celebrate as a district here in terms of where we are with these report cards. I mean, it's exceptional to see all of our elementary at that exceeds expectations and our secondary right there too. So it's a lot to celebrate, but we don't want to be satisfied, we want to keep moving up, so. Absolutely.
Now, when I look at these scores on the sheets, and we're all set now at the end?
Yes, they're all, the new bird dog is NAEPized, our scores have been NAEPized, yeah.
NAEPized, okay. So moving forward, we're all in the same standard.
Correct.
We're not all of a sudden saying dropping down because we're at one standard one year and one standard another year. What happened one year, I think, is either changed it, it's only everybody's dropping.
Absolutely. And you know, we have the new assessment that will be coming forward, the Smart Balance Assessment 2014. The cut scores for that assessment will be in alignment with the NAEP cut points.
And it's a new test?
It's a new test, computer-based.
For all levels?
It'll be grades three through eight, just like we have right now, and then the 11th graders instead of the 10th graders at the high school. Just reading and math, correct. But our state statute still requires us to assess our 4th, 8th and 10th graders with reading, math, language arts, science and social studies.
So we need to be achieving on all levels.
Any more questions? Peter?
Well, I would just remind us that on Wednesday, we're going to go Bill Richardson.
Yes, thank you for bringing it up.
And he's going to remind us in keeping all of this in perspective, this I believe from what I've read of his work would be doing better, which is essential and important, please do not misunderstand. But he'll also encourage us to do different. And I want to wave a flag for that, to remind us all that we're dealing with little people that need all kinds of enrichment that have nothing to do with what they're tested on. And that is critical and essential for their future to mature well. A metaphor, you know, in a certain day and age, you needed to learn how to use a slide rule and you were evaluated on whether you could use that slide rule. And nobody today ever uses a slide rule. And so we have to remind ourselves, it's not just about technology, it's about understanding a different worldview. And where does all this data fit in to helping our young people understand a different worldview that they will inherit, not us? And finally, are any of our students tested and evaluated as with this kind of structure on their ability to manage the world in which they are currently living in? In other words, their ability to manage iPods, computers, iPhones, video games, you name it, that I can't understand and I don't think anyone around this table can understand, but they understand with ease. Where are some of the ways of looking at how they grow in the world in which they inhabit, not just the world that, you know, we are helping them.
You speak to good points, Peter, because you know, just as professionals in the buildings working, this is just one lens to look at the work we do. And we do so much more than what's measured on this one assessment. And you know, what you're speaking to is a conversation we've had in our 21st Century Learning Work Group. So that's in our presentation for NAR night, but we'll talk about how we assess 21st century skills like cop-cop, communication, collaboration, creativity, conflict resolution, those things are really important. And we want to make sure that that's so important that we assess that across the district in meaningful ways. So that's coming.
Is that a PowerPoint?
Yes.
Well, you know, I want to speak a little bit to that too because obviously we even have some of the participants from Abe here who are part of our.
we even have some of the participants from AVE here who are part of our group. And I believe that, and I think they believe that too, that you know, many of these things that we're going to be working on will have positive effects even on the test scores too. But they're critical to having our students being ready for the workforce.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
On the agenda is reports of which we don't have any to add to the agenda tonight. So we will move to personnel recommendations. There's one to add under A, and that would be letter B, a long-term sub for 4th grade at North Freedom, Barbara Walter.
Move to approve long-term subs.
Second. We have a motion by McNeven, seconded by Cummings. Any discussion? Hearing done. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Brings us to the consent agenda for which I will turn to Chair of Finance, Mr. McNeven.
Well, always the highlight of any meeting, the Finance Committee met and reviewed the receipts and disbursements and we approve.
Second. Motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing done. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Brings us to new business. And as with the agenda adjustment earlier in the meeting, up first is the discussion and approval of the Dean health insurance renewal. The Personnel Committee met with representatives from Dean and with Mr. Lewison from Donrick, letting two members of the board who have status in the district that are covered by the plans exit. Bear with me for a second. Nonetheless, we met to discuss the renewal of the insurance, which is coming up on the 1st of January. Initially, the renewal came into the district at 8.1%. The committee, in discussions with Dean and with Dan from Donrick, tweaked some of the policies to keep the increase at 5%. Am I correct? I want to point out that as with the number of things that we have done over the course of the last year, I think we are in a transition period. And I don't mean transition in that we are openly looking to change health insurance. We just changed last year. But the process that we're going through, the wellness committee's input are all things that are a work in progress. And it certainly doesn't fall on deaf ears with this board member and I don't think with the other board members that are sitting at this table that, you know, we want to, we want to have the change be minimal. Moving forward, I think, once we initiate some wellness programs, we have an opportunity to obtain some savings. There is the potential of discussion of some possibility of differing the plan within Dean. But it was the consensus of the committee, I believe, and feel free to chime in if I'm not sharing your sentiments, Sean and Peter, but it was the consensus of the committee that we didn't want to make any wholesale changes for the upcoming year. So it is thus the committee's recommendation that we renew the Dean policy with the small changes that were made to the co-pay and the emergency room visit.
Drug tier.
The drug tier?
Tier two and tier three drug changed.
Five dollars.
To five dollars. And then for one group, the emergency room increased from.
To 125.
To 125.
Well, this is also combining two of our groups, which, you know, gives us a larger pool. But I think that, you know, the key thing is to be consistent moving forward with the policy. Like you said, it's year two. We now have two folks that have a lot of experience in health insurance management as well as communication. So if there's ever an opportunity to sit down and discuss how we deliver that health insurance and how it looks, and all the options that are available in the health insurance field, whether that's HRAs, HSAs, high deductible plans, those kind of things, all those take a conversation. And rather than, you know, have a small committee make those choices or changes, it was important that you put the professionals in charge of that process to look at. How do we, how do we, it's a $5 million item in our budget. It's a big ticket item. And, you know, so we'll be taking a close look at that and how do we get the most competitive number out there.
Martha, do you want to highlight anything under communication?
I mean, I think the changes are minimal. And because the employee group, the employee groups are receiving a raise and we only have the employees pay 12%, that increase is very minimal against the increase in salary that people are getting. So I think, I think it's a great, I think it's a good option that the Personnel Committee is moving forward with. So.
And while this is happening, of course, we have to keep our eyes on the potential legislative changes that might impact healthcare regulations effective January 1st, 2014. So that would be something I'm sure the committee will be discussing.
This contract comes due the same time every year?
Yeah.
Okay. And so I mean, maybe we could have maybe a mid-year report on where we're standing as far as reviewing the future process so that when it comes down to the last date that we, where are we right now with wellness and other things that can impact our health insurance costs? Or even looking at other competitive plans or cafeteria type of plan or something that can have an impact for both our costs and our employees' costs?
I think part of the discussion on the committee was, as both Sean and Kevin have indicated, the board's desire to keep things as equitable as possible in this transition year. And to ensure that the principles that this board has enacted in partnership with the BEA and others remain active. This is a partnership discussion amongst all of our community, our educational community. And I think that the Board Committee, the Personnel Committee felt that it would be appropriate to, in this transition year, move forward with these minimal changes. And to immediately begin, as Sean indicated, institute with our professionals, Martha and Craig, who come highly skilled in the field of healthcare negotiations, employee management, that they, under their guidance, begin a process of looking at what our options will be as we move forward, what options we can present to our community to say, these are preventative things that you can engage in, that we will incent you to participate in, that can reduce your share and the district's share of healthcare costs. These are a variety of options for how they are paid, whether through HSA, health accounts, all of which take a lot of explaining and educating. And that will be the responsibility of all of us as we move forward, I think, under the leadership of our, of our district team.
With that, I move to approve the Dean health insurance renewal.
Second.
Having a motion in a second. Anybody have any questions, comments? Mr. Lewison is here if there's any questions. Questions?
Sure. Can the audience participate? I realize you had your public input session earlier, but I do have a question.
Well, I will allow some latitude for a question or comment, certainly.
Albeit a very small change in the structure of the program, has that change been taken to the bargaining table? Has that been presented to the BEA?
Well, it's not, it's not a function of the bargaining anymore per se because we only can bargain.
I would remind the board that Act 10 is no longer in force. I think you have a responsibility under general collective bargaining legislation, present the change in benefits to the bargaining unit.
Well, I can assure you that there's several interpretations of where Act 10 stands today.
And there will be for generations.
Correct. So we are, we are adhering to our legal counsel's advice and how we proceed. I don't really have any other comments other than that.
But I would reiterate that in conversations and in exchanging information, the negotiating group from the BEA has been included in these conversations. It has, it's not a negotiating point, but it is a communication point. We all know that there are tremendous amounts of uncertainty and what was decided yesterday may be overturned tomorrow. But we have to operate in the here and now. And my concern and my commitment is to remind us that we operate according to a set of principles that we all agree to. There are legal principles and there are just principles. The legal principles are going to go through all kinds of transformation, but hopefully the just ones decided amongst all of our people can lead us forward in a very productive way. That is at least my hope and expectation.
Any other discussion from the board? Hearing done. Those in favor of the renewal of the Dean as presented from the Personnel Committee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. I need to get the other two board members back. We will have a momentary opportunity to pass the plats for Al Bierman. Where are these, he's going to go to the school.
turn to Chair of Finance.
This year, just like every other year, it's the time where we go out for a short-term borrowing called a trans borrowing. We traditionally take in about $4.8 million. That carries us until the tax levies come in. We put it out to bid to eight banks. We had three respond. We chose the 0.48% interest rate loan from the Berber National Bank. That's less than one-half of 1% on the $4.4 million. This year, we're only borrowing $4 million versus the 4.8 that we've traditionally borrowed. But the committee recommended that we go with River National at a nice tone of $5.
Second.
Motion by McNeven, seconded by Cummings. Any discussion?
The $4 million, is that the upper limit of what we will borrow? Is that correct? It's not the, we really won't end up borrowing that much.
Yeah, we borrow it and then we actually turn around and invest it. We got to make sure that we don't, you can't make more than what you pay in interest. There was periods in the past where that did happen.
Sure.
But that's, that's against the rules. So a lot of times those dollars get put into our bank. They're carried as balance, which helped us offset fees and things like that.
Okay. So balance, some of it is balanced out. So, okay.
Further discussion? Hearing done. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Brings us to the certification of the tax levy.
The committee met and reviewed the final tax levy. As you all know, this is the final step of our budget approval process that started a year ago. And this is actually the certification of the dollars that get levied. Martha, I will send a copy of the...
Read the dollar amounts. General fund is $12,426,728. The non-referendum debt levy is $241,369. And community service fund is $248,775.
And those are off pretty close to what we were talking about at the beginning of the budget. So I move to approve.
Second.
Having a motion by Mr. McNeven and a seconded by Mr. Cummings. Any discussion?
Yeah, just on October 15th, we received that from the EPI. Was that a different amount than we received earlier?
Our state aid is $3,000 higher than our July 1st estimate.
Okay. So it's just a touch higher a little bit. I didn't know what the rest is going to be doing.
Further discussion? Hearing done. And having a motion in a second on the floor. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Brings us to D, or what was originally D, which is now the request for the exception to the open enrollment application period. There's a couple of explanations to be provided by Dr. Ritz and Tower.
Well, just as a reminder again, we have two 10th grade students who are applying out of Baraboo to McFarland's Virtual School. One is currently homeschooled in Baraboo. We have a 4K student and a 5K student from the same family requesting open enrollment in from SOC to Baraboo, and a 4K student from Wisconsin Dells to Baraboo. This, the applications are ongoing, so I have an additional second grade student requesting open enrollment in from SOC. And I want to revisit the four requests that we had at the last meeting to a virtual school, all from the same family who have chosen to stay in Baraboo. That's it in a nutshell for this week.
We need traffic lights.
Any more questions?
I move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, just a quick question. On the virtual school application to McFarland's, you say it was a home school, so they were not attending our school district at this point. Do we have numbers on the number of virtual school students who are applying from our district?
As home school students, they have to go...
Who are home schooled students but are now attending virtual schools?
They have to go through the open enrollment process. I don't know if we have specific numbers on that, Dani.
During the regular enrollment period, which now is three months in length, runs from February to April, as part of that, they are only required to report their resident district, not necessarily what their current status is. So we would have to do some checking through our enrollment information to see whether or not they are an actively enrolled student versus a home schooled student, for example.
The reason why we know for this particular student is the parent decided to include that in their explanation for open enrollment exemption.
Okay. So I mean, it's typically, we may not have that.
They don't have to provide it.
Yeah. And again, it's, the virtual school enrollment is up 38% this year. And there are some questions of the fact that many of these students are, have been homeschooled or not in the public school education system.
Well, and I don't know if Lori, I can't remember if she mentioned it with the school report cards, but now looking at the data, it's no longer full academic year. So as we see kids that are more mobile coming in and out of school districts, we're going to have to try to sort through that data ourselves.
Okay. Wonderful. Well, again, I'll bring it up as far as our marketing efforts go because we are now living in a competitive environment where kids can come and go and choose based on a simple phrase, what's best for the student. And so I think we need to spend our time and resources advocating that we are what's best for the students. And that includes against the district, so that includes against virtual opportunities. I just think that we always have to continually offer those services, provide those explanations because I hear about somebody selecting to go to a virtual school where we have so many online learning activities, when we have our e-school alliance with the Appleton School District and all those opportunities and our summer school continuing education programs and yada, yada, yada. I just think we need to become marketers.
Sean, I would agree with you 100%. And I think this board should make a motion or a resolution to establish a committee to, and funding to create a way in which we can market who we are, what we are, what we do, how we do it, including our beautiful football field and our new facilities. We're about to, you know, discuss... We're about to discuss a facilities plan, and it seems to me the purpose of discussing that facilities plan is to highlight what Baraboo is doing for the future of its students. I don't think anything is going to get off the ground unless this board creates a committee and funds something in line with what you're suggesting. And I certainly would...
Well, I'm not looking to modify the resolution. It's, I don't know if there's a motion on table or not. But I'd certainly be willing to bring my ideas forward in the future. Peter, talk to you about that afterwards.
Thank you.
And see how we can...
Well, and specifically, I would like to involve Rhonda in that process as online coordinator. She needs to have some ideas as well for marketing.
Absolutely. And it's best also to talk to the members of our community that are marketing experts, because we're educated, we're all marketers.
It also seems to me that we're about to discuss hiring for the facilities plan, someone who's identified as a marketing expert, to help us think about our facilities. And I would encourage a part of that contract to include the things that we're talking about here, Sean.
Having a motion on the table, it's been seconded. Those in favor of the request for the exception to the open enrollment applications as articulated by Dr. Rizan Tower, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Brings us to a board member request to post memorandum response to attorney's report. That request, having it on the agenda, was from Mr. Mortimer.
As you all know, an attorney was hired to investigate me for going on six months. And it was also put on the Baraboo School website. I don't recall any board action that you put Brown's report on the Baraboo School website. But I feel that this board and district administrator is fair and honest and open, transparent, accountable. I would like to make a motion that my report from my attorney, in its entirety, including the exhibits, be placed on the Baraboo School website for a minimum of two weeks. That's my motion.
Through a second?
I'll second it for a point of discussion. Ed, on this here, Attorney Brownlee was an independent investigator on this matter. She contacted you and offered you the chance to sit down and give your side of the story, which you declined. She called you twice, offering that same deal, which you turned down. At a closed session of this board, you were offered a chance to give your response, and you refused. You walked out. Not only that, you also sued the board here to keep them from releasing this information. It's quite a swap in the way you're wanting now. So I don't know.
Well, my comment would be that the Baraboo News Republic and its parent company chose to place your response from your attorney on its website in its entirety, for what duration, I do not know. My desire is that the situation, the report, the summertime activities that involved most of, if not all of this board, that we put it behind us. And I looked at once the response that you had in front of you, because it was provided to the board in a single copy, and I don't know that we made six copies of the response, but I did look at it. And there's no possible way that that could be placed on the district's website without it having to have been looked at by an attorney for potential lawsuits that could occur if that's placed on the district website. And I don't equate that report with what was provided by Ms. Brownlee. That's my comment. Any other comments? Hearing done, we have a motion on the floor and a second brought forth by Mr. Mortimer to place the memorandum response on the district's website for a minimum of two weeks. Those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Brings us to the approval or the discussion of the EU Architects Phase 2 Master Planning and Public Information Proposal. I don't know how much detail we want to go back into as far as what was presented. Here to the point that our request of them was to come forth with a Phase 2 proposal and spell out what was involved and what would be provided in Phase 2. The bottom line economically, and I think they fairly well explained what the scope of their services would be for Phase 2. The proposal is for $45,000. Services commence on the 22nd of October and continue through approximately the spring of 2014. There is also a contingency or an addition of up to $3,500 in actual expenses that would be reimbursable throughout the term of that contract.
Kevin, I have some questions. I've read it over. I wasn't here at the actual most of the meeting here. But maybe I'm a little confused. If we go with Phase 2 and it's successful, are we tied into Phase 3?
No. No, we are not. That's not, at least that's my understanding. We are not tied into Phase 3.
There is a clause on page one, and yes, the, you know, if we completed the terms of the contract, it would run through spring of 2014. But there's also a provision that says until either party terminates this agreement. So I did clarify that with EUA staff, that that is indeed correct. So if the board got four months into this project, and we were engaging with the community, and it was clear that this was not a priority for the community, the board would have that out with this contract to be able to terminate.
Well, and not only that, but the expenses would not be upfront. They would be billed as occurred.
For actual time.
Correct, actual time and reimbursement.
Well, but it doesn't say. It's something about percentage of the project.
That's Phase 3.
That's if we did Phase 3, but this is not Phase 3.
So you would have, in order to enter into Phase 3, you'd have to have a successful referendum. You can choose to move forward with that.
Right, that's what I'm sort of, I can understand where, you know, we need to upgrade facilities and do this and do that. But my concern is though, probably some of our maintenance issues are the, on the top of our list.
Yeah.
By going with EUA and maybe passing a maintenance referendum or what have you, are we, I just was wondering if we're tied into the costs there. Also, I noticed on some of their drawings and architectural things, they don't match up with our MSA five-year plan and some of the things, some of the building plans. Now, regardless, you have an architectural firm, you have engineering firm, and you also got a little redundancy here. And the costs that I was reading in the contract there, Phase 3, that, in addition to MSA contracts, is a big chunk of the project itself. If it has to be some of the projects that are already in our five-year plan. That's my concern.
I had that same concern, and brought that up to them about working in conjunction with MSA, because the last thing we need is an architect to, you know, come right into town, you know, sell us on a process which we like, and then turn around and leave town. And our roaster leaking, who do we call? MSA. Our boilers don't work, who do we call? MSA. Look, we're tied at the hip with local engineering and mechanical contractors, because that's who we are and that's who we use. And so they said, no, they work in conjunction with, they certainly did not have a problem working in conjunction with MSA. There's no need to duplicate all of those efforts. There's, now, we may have to figure out how to split out the future B, but we're not paying duplicate fees for one boiler in the future. I agree, but they said that those kind of things can be worked out.
Right, and actually, a separate contract would be issued for Phase 3, and that would follow the standard, I asked what that was, American Institute of Architects contract format. So a separate contract would be issued for Phase 3. So I'm sure there would be a lot more discussion regarding that before we get to that.
Well, that could be a subcontract, but I think that's, we're getting ahead of ourselves when we have this discussion.
But I'm not saying entirely, but I'm saying, what I'm trying to say is that, you know, we have to start having this discussion, and this is the format of where we're going to have that discussion. And as we move along, we're going to say, where do we go with these different parts?
I mean, roofs is a huge part of our discussion.
Absolutely.
Mechanicals is a huge part of our discussion going forward. I mean, and those, so much groundwork has already been laid by somebody else. There's no need to do a repetition of any of that work or to pay for it again. So, I mean, it is appropriate to bring it up.
In reference to the design, you know, we pointed out several areas too that didn't match up, and that was really just to get people thinking about some big ideas and options that might be out there as we start to think about priorities for our buildings.
Right, and then part of the original report there too had to do with the student population. We discussed that earlier, that's down this year. And along with virtual schools and losing some tenants to that too. But I would just like to see this put off for a while till after we get our building projects done at the middle school and the, and stuff out of the way. When we start budgeting it next year, and just see how we end up finishing this year out and what it looks like going forward before we tie into a contract like this. Because I don't think we have the, our immediate needs and stuff are going to be in the maintenance type thing.
Well, that's where I start to split this table down the middle. Because, I mean, you've been on finance and you know it so much better than the rest of the board. The money just isn't in that finance budget to accomplish what we need to get done. And now, these projects are starting to raid our piggy bank. This wall, the remainder of the track, all those things start dipping into fund balance. And we're past the point of the nickels and dimes and prioritizing. I mean, we're still fixing sidewalks, we're still fixing ramps and doors and windows and things like that, but it's not to the scale. When we've got 10 acres of roofs that are out of warranty, those are bucks that aren't coming out of our budget. Are they leaking? Not all of them, not to the degree that, but can they be designed better, replaced better, and, yeah. But in order to do that, and in order to finish the middle school without waiting our piggy bank, we need to have a community conversation about the roofs, about the mechanicals. When somebody tells me that we can replace a boiler and start saving thousands of dollars every year, and I say, well then, why haven't we replaced it already? Well, because we didn't have the money to replace it. You know, to me, replacing a boiler that starts saving you money day one is the smartest decision you can make. That should be our top priority.
The last significant capital project improvement with our facilities was in 1995. That was 18 years ago. So, you know, the board needs to at least have a conversation about reinvesting in our facilities if we're going to maintain them for the future.
I understand that, Crystal. Like I said, I just, from my interpretation of the contract, it looked like we were paying too much in the way of design, architecture, engineering, and stuff there, where most of it's already done. I understand it perfectly.
Right, but Midstates hasn't been involved in looking at our current utilization of space or our learning environments or potential additional space to buildings. You know, Midstates has really been involved with maintaining our current facilities as they exist right now.
True.
And so the communication...
Much of this is helping us with that community conversation. Now, it's about four years that we've been deferring and deferring and deferring our maintenance projects. And I feel as a board member, I've got an obligation to leave our facilities in better shape than when I got on here. And right now, I'm not sure our facilities are in better shape. I don't think they're worse. We've made some investments, but I don't think they're in better shape than when I got on the board. And I think this is important to have a community conversation. And these folks can help us articulate not only our needs, but our priorities in looking at how we use our space. Because I want to make sure we're using our space the best way possible. And I'm not sure we are.
I would use an analogy of our technology 10 years ago, we didn't have any technology, 18 years ago, we didn't have any technology to speak of. And now, this building is wired, if you will. It's a whole new infrastructure. Well, that's really what we're looking at with brick and mortar. What's the next 10, 20 years going to be? This is a conversation to start looking ahead, and these are design people who are in the forefront of doing that with schools. We're not committing. We're basically asking them to continue the conversation with us and engaging them to work with us and engaging the community to a larger conversation. It does not change the fact that roofs will need to be taken care of and boilers will need to be replaced. But it will give us an opportunity to say, are we going to replace this boiler at a cost of $20,000, $30,000, $40,000 in a building that three years from now is not going to exist? We will know the answer, because we'll have the plan that helps us understand that. So for me, it's looking at the metaphor of what's happened with our technology and infrastructure and simply applying that to the larger scale of our brick and mortar. I would personally be in favor of supporting Phase 2 and having that conversation go on, but I would ask that included in that contract is the discussion this board just had on engaging marketing professionals, of which this group and the person that we've been working with, Kip, is an expert in, to help us as a part of the facilities plan think about the marketing of where we are today, where we want to be. And our facilities are one aspect of that. All of the work that our curriculum and instruction have done is another part of that. Where in this state do you get the kind of support that this board has given to new models, new architecture, not only of their buildings, but of their systems and structures internally to educate our own people? We have to promote that. We have to, we have to reach beyond Baraboo to help our region understand who we are, what we do, and how we do it.
Can I just make one point on this, is that that isn't part of this contract, so...
It can be added to this contract. I would only vote for this contract if it were added to this contract.
Peter, let me just say, why don't we vote on the contract? And then, Crystal, could I have a conversation with them saying, there's an interest in this? And then bring that up as a possible revision to the contract.
Well, I think there's a way that we can tie it in with the communication efforts that would be underway, and they're very responsive to what our district needs are. So I'm sure that we can wrap those things together.
Okay.
I think Gary's points are well taken. I mean, I understand that there's an immediate need to address some of our roofs and such. And unfortunately, the rest of the board has a leg up on you because you weren't here for the full presentation that took place when they were at our last board meeting. But having been on the board for more than a few years...
All team.
It's important that we start a discussion.
Right, I guess the biggest word I had was that, is my interpretation of the contract that Phase 2 is successful and you, that you're tied into Phase 3. That was mine's reason.
But it doesn't, if I understood these reports...
Right.
It seems to me like B, the space needs is not a real, real huge priority. We have enough space for the number of students. If I read this report right, it's just they have to restructure some walls or something. So I'm assuming that boilers and roofs are more important right now than spending, what, $2 or $3 million to put ahead in the desk and chairs?
I don't disagree at all. I think my answer to that question is obviously the buildings need to be maintained. Some of the rest of that stuff, I think, is premature to say what the community wants us to do. I think it's premature to say what the response to that would be. As Sean's articulated, we have a responsibility to maintain the buildings.
We also haven't spent a whole lot of time talking about access to our facilities. You know, all of these facilities were built well before ADA came in. All of these facilities were built before our teaching strategies changed. You know, we've got kindergartners running down hallways looking for bathrooms and things like that. You know, there's some things that we can do better. And I'm not advocating running out and finding ADA... And, and I'm not, I'm not advocating running out and finding eighty acres. I'm not advocating anything other than investing in our facilities personally. But I think there's, there's components that to me, you know, there's roofs, there's mechanicals, and there's environment. And that environment is accessibility and usage of our, you know, space. You know, and some of that, Ed might be just replacing carpet that hasn't been replaced since the junior I was built. But, but that's, that's a conversation I think we just need to have. We need to talk to this community about looking at reinvesting our facilities. We are now officially debt-free. And that last reinvestment was fifteen, eighteen years ago, and those investments that are done, have been paid for. It's time to take a look at, at how we use our buildings and how long they're gonna last.
Well, another thing too is, is, that's why I see the whole thing. You do your normal maintenance, you might as well at the same time upgrade instead of just fixing the way it was back in sixty-three. You bring it up to date to, to two thousand and thirteen.
I mean, look, look at light fixtures and things like that, and, you know, it, it's mechanicals, it, it's energy usage, it's just, and it may be moving some walls. It, it may be giving additional access to areas that are unaccessible.
Maybe just adding a few pieces of furniture. Well, maybe more than a few pieces.
But I, but I think, but I think it's worth the conversation, I think it's a small price, so I'll move to approve Phase Two.
I'll second. Having a motion and a second. It was preceded by discussion. Do we have any more discussion?
Just wanna make sure that that point, uh, Crystal, about marketing is contained in whatever, uh, the final document is that's brought to us.
Further discussion?
I, I wanna just mention one thing. It seems like all of this money that we're supposedly gonna spend, and I talked to one of the present, presenters at the last meeting, but I don't really see anything in this you, what, you, D, you, whatever it is, report how this is gonna affect student achievement. And, uh, and he didn't have any data or any, anything saying how spending all this money is gonna affect student achievement. And I just-
I would like to, I- I think that's a great question that we have moving forward, and we have our principals answer those questions, because I bet they can have a list of ideas that will impact student achievement by having nominal investments being made. Whether it's better use of an auditorium space, whether it's allowing for a three-track system at Gordon L. Wilson, I, I would imagine that would impact a lot of families getting shuffled around from building to building. I, I think that's a great point, and something that all of our building administrators can come back and show us some investments that will pay dividends for student achievement.
And I would also like to just, to reiterate back to the report, uh, a very extensive report on our buildings, but there were also studies in there that, that showed the impacts of, of, of changing the educational environment on student achievement, so. But I believe that we need to have that-
Yeah, but I'd rather hear from our administrators than-
And that was my but is, yes, I would like to hear further from our, from our, uh, educational experts, our own educational experts on what they feel those impacts will be.
Well, and, and we'll have teachers involved in those discussions too, whether it's our literacy coaches or Twenty First Century Committee and, and others that are, that are, you know, working directly with students to share that.
Well, and of course, that's the piece of the pie that's going to be, uh, what the conversation is about. 'Cause most of us understand roof needing replacement, it's out of warranty, you know? Uh, most of us understand boilers and mechanicals that just wear out or they're aged and could be replaced with something more efficient. Well, we've gotta have the majority of the conversation about is how we use our space education, yeah. And that's-
Are we gonna have a, uh, conversation with all the staff in the high schoo- in the school district? Or is that gonna be, the conversation's gonna have the, you know, principals and the staff and the individual of school?
I, I think-
I think all these staff certainly would have different ideas.
And, and we'll rely on our EUA staff and our, you know, Kit Daly and the communication person. I know she has a lot of strategies in mind and different ways to engage people in those conversations, so I guess I would defer that to her.
And, and it talked about that briefly, with like having a focus group where you have maybe a couple board members and a community members, obviously, uh, administrators, and then also then many teachers involved with that process too, so. Uh, and that would be the focus group, but obviously, and within that focus group, there'll be conversations that would be heard from people too. So this is definitely a community conversation.
Further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. To the portion of the agenda entitled Executive Closed Session. Entertaining motion for executive closed session as statutes noted in the posting. Is there a second?
Second. Roll. Aye, aye, aye. Thank you, everybody.